Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Glad everybody could make it. It's always nice to see a couple more people each time. I've already talked about phones. Let us rise for the invocation by Bob Prebo this evening. And then Bob is going to have -- we're going to change something. Bob's going to go ahead and go from the invocation right into the pledge.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we gather tonight to make decisions for our community. May we use only our best skills in judgment and keep ourselves impartial and neutral as we consider the merits and pitfalls of each matter that is placed before us. May we always act in accordance with what is best for our community and our fellow citizens in Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you please face the flag? Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Georgiana.
Director Marcisol.
Here.
Vice President Ann Rice.
Here.
President Dan Loeb.
Here.
Director Bockelbo.
Here.
Director Gohalov.
President.
Approval of consent calendar, number two.
Do we approve the consent calendar?
It's been moved that we approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? No discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Number three, public participation. You all have read it. Anybody wish to come up and speak in regards to an item not on the agenda?
Warren Harvey. I got in paradise in 1947. I'm proud of it. The rest of you newbies can start adding it up. But the reason I'm here is because of an old saying, "A watch pot never boils." So I quit watching the pot, and sure enough, it started boiling. So people are coming to me out in the public, and we're wondering what's happening. People that we recalled are running again, and people are hiring an assistant manager that you just wonder to yourself, even George was able to handle that job himself. And I've got nothing against Kevin, but if Kevin's doing good work, let's try to give him a raise of some kind or something, but let's not put another man in there. Kevin ran the whole show by himself. He done the treasurer. He done the general manager job. He ran the whole thing by himself. By the way. Thank you very much. So I'd like to see you guys sit back and do a little reflection on what you're here for. And if you're in doubt about any of this stuff, you should go out and talk to the public instead of just coming here late at night and making decisions, because the public don't agree with this. Thank you.
Do you want to make a point of clarification?
I've got a couple of things, and I don't think I'll take all five minutes. We hosted the Butte County Fire Safe Council Executive Committee and some staff here at our garden a few days ago. They very much appreciated what we had and the way that we're displaying it and how educational it is. They do believe that a better partnership can be developed between PID and the Fire Safe Council and conduct some future educational projects, whether it's in this room or their meeting place or somehow. And then forward-thinking, like we had done about three years ago, four years ago, when we had professional landscapers here to talk about water-wise irrigation systems, maybe the same kind of a thing sponsored in a partnership where we could talk to professional landscapers about water-wise landscaping and fire-wise landscaping combined. Because if we have that and somebody is thinking about the protection of their property, they're personally not going to be using all that much water. So they will be conserving as well as providing a safer piece of property, which takes some hardship away from the fire department, firefighters. The second thing is, and I'm not the only one that has noticed this, but it's significant for me, because we don't like a particular detergent in our dishwasher, so we use one that doesn't have a softener in it. So lately, what we've noticed is if we take the glasses out before they've had a chance to dry, they're foggy. And I've noticed this on windows as well. If you don't get a very good rinse, what this is, is this is a residue of an increase in calcium hardness. So I'd like somebody here to research this and see if we've had some kind of a significant increase in our calcium hardness. I happen to know about this because working in the bottling industry, if you have an increase in calcium hardness and you're rinsing bottles, and the air dry, it leaves a little residue, and in food business, a little residue in the neck of a bottle doesn't look so good. So I thank you for your time. May I have more comments?
I've got a question for you. Would you mind coming back up? I think it's a misconception from some people that you can't talk about what the person talks about. We can talk about it a bunch, and we can respond. We just can't make any decisions here in regards to something--
Not an agenda item, I understand.
That is correct. But did I gather that you are thinking that it might be a good idea to have a representative from this board on the Fire Safe Council? Now, many other boards and many other functions in town have representatives from their group in other organizations. And so is that kind of what I gathered you were suggesting?
It's fairly common in some of the other areas and other districts. We don't have so much overlap like that here. Town council is probably the one where they have more people participating in a variety of other things--
Right.
--League of Cities, et cetera, than we do here. You have the committees that are part of PID, but except for somebody, I think Larry Duncan used to serve on one that went beyond PID, and so has Bill. So, you know, absent that, yes, we don't have the kinds of partnerships that the Fire Safe Council is looking for. For instance, the one that they're starting with the State Garden Clubs, so.
We might choose to talk about that and agendize it in the future, to choose somebody from here that would be a representative to that organization.
Probably a good idea. During the regular meetings that they have, the regular monthly meetings, we always have one represented there, and that's Dobbs from the Lake Committee.
Okay.
And he is current vice chair there.
Oh, okay.
And last meeting, Ed was there.
Oh, right.
And he also went to the Ridge Fire Safe Council meeting, too. So he's tied in there. So he knows a little bit already about what's going on there. But the progress they're thinking of is to being more educational-oriented, and this is not just us and not just them, but it's other groups as well, to say, "How do we get to the community and help the community understand what makes our community better?" So these kinds of partnerships, things that we're looking forward to.
Yeah. Still may not be a bad idea. So I might put that on a future agenda. Thank you. I'm sorry, you had your hand up.
I was just going to point out that Rick Dobbs is part of the Fire Safe--
Would he get information to our board meetings, though, if something came up?
I'm not unless you ask him, because it's been just shared with the Lake--
We could request that, certainly, to get a report. I think it would be beneficial, because there's a lot of crossover. There was a lot, I was very interested in a lot of the agenda items, and had some thoughts about partnerships with Cal Fire, some grant money, and something I was going to discuss in the future day.
Well, if you all don't mind, I think I'm going to put that on a future agenda to talk about more, so. Anyone else from public seeing none? Back to number four, staff and billing reports.
So my manager's report, does that--
No, we're just on staff and billing. So we basically open it up to questions.
Yep. If we have questions, we will let you know. And actually, no, I'll go last. Mark, you got any questions?
Okay.
Page.
Page sixteen on Jim's report. We're on staff report, right?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah.
Jim, you were talking about a prepared and after-action memo. Could we take a look at that? That sounds very interesting to me. I mean, if it's okay. Yeah, yeah, that'd be great.
I'd like, I'm kind of, I'm going to have a big topic by the end of this month, so--
Yeah.
I kind of just include that, too, and--
Okay.
--together.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Appreciate you doing that.
I have a question. Actually, it was for the engineering report.
Okay.
On page thirty-two. I guess the fifth paragraph, last sentence. Staff continue to work on cross-connection control and metering issues as they apply to the Deloro Water Company interties.
Yeah. Yes, and we've had several discussions in the House with Jim Ladrini and Neil, myself, discussing backflow prevention, and in particular, some of the wholesale connections to Deloro-- excuse me. I'm a strong believer in backflow prevention and to avoid cross-contamination, and your first priority is to protect your system proper, your mains, PID's mains. And so a wholesale connection is certainly low-hanging fruit in that conversation. We presently do not have sufficient backflow, in my opinion, at those connections, so we're investigating that, and it's in the discussion phase at this point, and we're going to engage the Deloro ownership and management and have some further discussions about what that means. We are looking at our internal policies, the California law that regulates that activity--
Okay, fine.
--which is somewhat general, and whether we need to make something more specific as a PID policy a little stronger, but reach out to them proactively and engage them in a positive way.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Bob, any questions? Bill, do you have any questions?
What are we doing here? I just sort of got lost for a moment.
Staff and billing reports.
Yeah, four A, which is page eight to something like forty or whatever.
Are we doing A and B at the same time?
We can.
Okay.
We generally take an action on both of them together.
Yeah.
So if you choose to go on into B, that's fine. It doesn't matter.
That's everything. So--
While you're finding them, Bill, I got a question. On page eight, kind of had a question somebody can answer. Customer reimbursement, permanent removal of inch-and-a-half meter and permanent removal of a one-inch meter at sixty-nine thirty-three Skyway. I was curious, what is sixty-nine thirty-three Skyway? Is that the house that was condemned by the town or anything like that?
Good question.
Okay.
I'm not sure. We'll follow up on that and get back to you, Dan.
It's actually more of a curiosity thing. I just wondered how often we go around removing meters from people. We do a lot of alternating the sizing, you know, upsize, downsize, but not very often.
I don't know if that was a redevelopment or what exactly, but we'll look into that and get back to you.
Then I had one other question about the PFD, also on page eight, the joint pipeline projects. Of course, it's self-explanatory there, what's going on. But I had a question about asphalt. I've never really had this before. Do we, how much of that do we do in-house? Is it all done in-house, or is it done partly out? Because I know the temporary patches, I'm sure we do in-house, yeah? We compact and cover and then--
And I had this conversation, and Kevin, you probably know better than me, but I'm pretty sure that we do at least a portion of the permanent paving as well. I think maybe the main channel, oftentimes, we may outsource and do the service line lateral pavement in-house. Does that sound right?
So we've done it both ways. I believe on this project, we're going to do it in-house. But we've looked at economies of scale sometimes when it's a bigger project, that the contractor can come in and do it in just a one big swoop. And when prices were lower, we really looked at that, because they were much faster and more competitive priced. So we, on each project, we look at it on a case-by-case basis, on if we do it in-house or we don't. But we do have the ability to do permanent asphalt work in-house.
Do we have an asphalt machine, or do we just dump truck it from down by Matthews, down by the creek and--
Yeah, we don't have an asphalt machine. We have--
You don't?
It's like a--
Can I answer part of that? We have an asphalt machine that takes up the asphalt.
Okay, removal, but not--
Yeah, removal. And then, as far as putting it down, we have tamperers. You've seen them.
Well, the machines, naturally, you adjust the size to the size of the trench, and you put it all in, and it just comes down as is needed. And it's just, you just drive down the ditch and it's done. Whereas if you don't have the machine, well, then you've got to put it in, scrape it around, and take it out if you get too much. I don't know if asphalt--
Also, it's mechanized now.
Yeah.
At one time, it was. When I first got on board, we're a little mechanized. We didn't even have a crew. We have that now.
That's good.
Cat, you know, bobcat.
We have our own--
I believe we have-- Excuse me, Bill, I'm sorry.
Pardon?
I'm sorry, I've interrupted you.
No, no, that's all right.
I was just going to say, I believe we have sufficient equipment to do the job for the smaller width patches that we create. We do not have the equipment to do a road width-sized job, like you see on a highway project.
Well, generally, we're, yeah, we're two, three feet wide.
That goes back to Kevin's explanation of the larger things contracted--
Exactly.
--and needing larger bikes and stuff. The only thing I have is, when I first got on the board, the field staff was always here at a board meeting to answer these kind of questions. And they might even leave early, but they were here to ask detailed questions and give answers to them. And it would work very well, and then I don't want, for some reason, in fact, the guys asked me one day about two years ago, "Why aren't we coming to the board meetings anymore?" I said, "Well, you're asking the wrong person." I don't know.
If that's a question to me, I'll be happy to answer it, and part of the answer is that I'm learning.
We understand.
But that being said, we have had a lot of conversation around just that, Bill, and I agree with you. We can certainly give you more accurate prompt answers in the moment with staff here. Obviously, we weigh that against the cost of that person or those folks' time, salary, while they're here, and so we're trying to be frugal and still be responsive to the board. So I'd appreciate guidance from you guys about your preferences on that, and I'll be happy to respond accordingly.
This issue has come up before, and in fact, if I remember correctly, you'll help me, one of the reasons that we altered the agenda to put this up front is so that they could come, and then we deal with a lot of the other peripheral stuff that does not require.
Understood.
And so you all think about it and--
Yes, we sure will.
And we discussed it maybe every other month, or when they had something really prudent that we wanted, you know, on the agenda from distribution, that we wanted to--
Excellent. We will respond accordingly. Thank you.
Like a big purchase or something of that nature.
Right, right.
Does your labor agreement allow them to flex their time, like work noon to eight or something?
There is an allowance to flex time, but that's generally more to the individual's preference than it is the district's, generally speaking.
That's my point. If you had a volunteer who'd rather sleep in--
If they volunteered to do that, I think it would be within the labor agreement.
But I don't think we've asked staff to do so.
We generally try to get issues like this, questions that we might have, out of the way soon, so they don't have to be here until ten forty-five.
Understood. Very good. We've discussed having meetings during business hours to avoid that conflict, but we're flexible, and thank you for the guidance.
I do have some questions.
Yes.
I was pleased to see that the leak detection thing was mentioned in here. Seventeen main lines reported, seven were leak detection leaks, so it's being worked with. I was surprised to see it was four hundred and twenty-five fireflies were replaced this month, or--
That's cooking.
It's cooking right along.
Yes, sir.
Sixty or seventy on the road.
About sixty-five. Yes, sir.
Fifty-five, okay. Then the Crestview Crestwood project is in progress. It's been in progress for, what, about sixty days and a half or something?
Yeah, there's some further detail, Bill, and I think another section of the staff report. And from my understanding, we're pretty well completed with the main construction, and so we're working on the lateral connections and some of the final disinfection and bacteriological analysis. So we're thinking somewhere between, just north of a month left to complete it, approximately.
My strange sense of humor in this report, I don't know who read it, wrote it, I should say, but every one of them says, "Excellent service. Excellent service." I'm not--
That's good. We like it.
I won't take credit for that one. But I will say, these guys do excellent work. Well, as a whole, the community reputation is positive.
Yes.
Really is.
The other one would be page twelve, and it's showing, the graph is showing that we're gaining on leaks, we're getting more leaks, and I always like to bring this up because most of them are probably steel lines. And it is increasing slowly, but sure. So that's why I keep talking about we need to put more money. I was happy to see that we did replace almost three thousand feet so far this year.
Yep.
And that's up, and hopefully will continue up. That's on the next.
You know, Bill, I like the, I was appreciating the same thing you are, and then in conjunction with the lost water, the non-revenue water reduction over time, and the correlation between those two graphs, and those are both very good news for the district.
Yeah. Well, not the leaks increasing, but--
No, yes.
Then the thing that I talk about ever since I've been on the board, because when I first got on the board, it was brought up to me that fifty-six point nine-four miles of steel, four to twelve inches, and I understand most of the World War II rat steel pipe had a lot of on Mars, but we've been working. I think that's where we'll find more leaks, but it's thirty-three percent of the system.
Yes.
So it's not going to go away. Let's see. I was, monthly residual water conservation on page sixteen is twenty-five percent compared to July of two thousand eighteen. I actually don't are disappointed with that, because I want to see customers using more water and thereby increasing the cash flow in the district. And I think that's more important to us right now than, we've got full reservoirs, two years supply.
My mother-in-law's helping with that a tremendous amount. She keeps leaving her water on for days at a time, so. We went out the other day and found out Monday that she had turned a hose on an apple tree or something on Friday, and it ran for four days.
Sign up for Water Hawk, Dan.
Yeah.
There's going to be a here the phone.
On page twenty-one, it's talking about mixing, testing for the Plume and Magalia Reservoir, temperature, water temperatures, and how critical they are. Because of that, because of the hot weather, we haven't been able to do the monitoring yet, and Jim has a good explanation in here. But we need to get that done so that we know that we can actually get the MPDES permit renewed with that, because it's, right now, it's just a computer study, but it hasn't been tested. Excuse me. So, and I notice the date's been moved back to December thirty-first of this year, to be able to get that. And right now, the DC BM on page twenty-four is, you have to look at the green column below to realize they're all less than the max.
Yes.
We don't want it, the barrier, we don't want it to go over, right, Jim?
Less than the minimum detection limit of the instrument. It's basically a zero.
Very good.
That point, that less than zero point zero five, that is actually the lower limit, detection limit of the instrument, which is in effect a zero.
Okay. Maybe we ought to put a note in there for that.
Well, they don't like you to say that.
Yeah, it's always zero. It's always less than.
Yes.
Yeah, less than the detection limit.
So I don't see--
That's good news.
Yes.
How many pages does this thing go to?
Up to forty.
Forty-one, I think.
Oh, okay, there you have it. The lake agenda on page thirty. I'm real happy to see that, and I actually can get happy. You see the blue mark indicating the month of, what is it, July, is far bigger than it's ever been with this system from two thousand eight. Two thousand eighteen is evidently set a record for July use of the lake, money income and so forth, which it's pointed, if it keeps going that way, we're actually going to have one of our best years ever for the use of the lake. That's really something. And it's reflected over on the next chart on page thirty-one on the cash flow, what, how much money has really came in.
I hate to say this, but Laura was telling me that July is going to show bigger because the deposit and calculations didn't get positive.
What was it?
The June figures, for the June figures, the deposit calculations didn't all get done at the usual time, so that's why July is showing.
Oh, so that's part of June.
Carried out through July, okay.
But I think the overall graph is still trending up, Bill.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
So now, non-revenue, page thirty-three, it's actually shows going down. That's what Ed was talking about.
Yes, sir.
Leakage on that quantity is going down. And, okay, how many pages?
To forty, through forty, I think it is.
Oh, the dingo.
There's one thing that disturbs me, and I mentioned it last month, on page thirty-eight, past due build in the center, they're under current, total current billing. If you compare years to years and the variance, there actually are, past due has been going on. I know eventually we'll get it, but it is going on. I've got no idea. That's it, I'm done. Thank you.
On page fifteen, I've got a question. How long is the forty-two-inch line? It never is listed there. What is that?
Two point five miles.
It's two and a half miles, yeah. I knew that it was a pretty good size, but it's never on there, because it goes up to X size and then doesn't say, because that's just one piece of pipe. That's the only forty-two-inch piece of pipe through the system, isn't it? Just from the plant down to the rez?
Yeah, Dan, it begins at the plant and it ends just below my house at the splitter box there.
Correct.
Yeah.
Two and a half miles out.
The Creek Crossing pipe is, isn't that a, what size is that? That's--
Five inches.
Same size, same size, forty-two, yeah.
But that's just a piece.
Two pipes.
Yeah.
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 Are there any more questions than the two fours, A and B?
I had a question for Neil's engineering report. Just curiosity, he talks about, submitted a request for proposal for engineering analysis of the Magalia Dam outlet pipe anchors. Are those concrete footings? What are those?
They're concrete cradles with steel bolt cover to secure, and the, looking, from speaking with Neil, looking at the profile and the depth of the berry of the steel portion was in question, age, structural integrity over time, and so we're doing further analysis of that.
Okay. Is that part of the spillway investigation, or is that a separate?
I think it's separate.
Separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was a requirement by the OSESK--
Oh, okay.
--a couple of years ago, and getting to it.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think it's anything to be terribly concerned about, but it's good housekeeping to make sure it's in good shape.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
For ten years, I've been waiting for the situation to be fixed, and I disagree with the engineering one that's proposed, and that you could use, replace the steel underneath that with other steel that's stronger, and the pillars stay there even though there's no reinforcement on it. If you look at the pillars, you'll see holes in them that we drilled years ago trying to find reinforcement.
I think these are two different things we're talking about, Bill. The bracing that we're discussing, that concrete is in fact reinforced.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. You're talking about--
Creek crossing.
The creek crossing.
Yeah.
Which you're correct, that is a different discussion. That is not reinforced concrete.
No.
I like the spillway in Oravella.
The footings have not gone out.
Any other questions?
I just wanted, I wanted to thank Mickey for her work, her continued work on the website. It's a work in progress, and thank you, Mickey, if you're watching.
Where'd she go? I think she left after she set up.
She'll be back, though.
Looks good.
Yes.
Agreed.
Yes, thank you. On the projects report, page eight, you indicated about the project on Bushman. At town council last night, Craig Baker reviewed what was happening with that project, what the status of it was, and that the permits for clearing the land had been approved, that there was a conditional element there for dust control, because it's such a large piece of property, and they expected to start clearing the property soon, he didn't know when. They actually started today, and they did use an awful lot of water. That one and a half inch line looked like a fire hydrant going off. I just happen to know the neighbors next door are quite upset about losing all that shade from those trees that are all gone now.
What's going on? What's going on, Laura?
I guess it's apartments.
Yeah, apartment house.
Robert.
Oh, yeah. I just drive that road quite frequently, and a couple of years later it disappeared. Whoa.
It is always sad to see a whole lot of trees, to have the land just taken bare. However, people got to keep in mind that with time, especially with the town requirements on buildings, they do require a lot of replantation. You give it X number of years, up there at the Paradise Alliance Church, that was one huge naked field, but look at it now, it's beautiful. With time, it grows back, so. And without pine trees, we'll be less fire prone. Anybody, anybody else from the public choose to speak to this? Okay. Chair, entertaining motion, please.
I move we accept the staff and billing reports.
I'll second that.
It's been movement, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. District manager's report.
Well, the report is written as you see it. I've primarily, honestly, taking, taken the last, most current report and done updates. I did go back and review the information that was existing and just made a couple, a couple of minor edits, but I'll go through them quickly. On the water rights, the, the update is primarily that Kevin and I will be traveling to Sacramento very soon to discuss the, the activity with the consultants in question. That's, I've not been able to focus a great deal on that particular subject, but I'm very interested in getting to understand it much better as soon as possible. On the boat launch, that's, obviously, everyone knows that that, that the grant is no longer, that we disapproved the grant into the grant. We've spent, we had the lake committee meeting, and we discussed various components of the lake and areas around that, and among them, some discussion, not a lot, around this particular component, but more about picnic tables and ADA compliance access. On the process water recycle project, again, I, I think, my opinion is that that's a really, it's great news that we're not going to have to invest in a, in a large treatment process. That being said, there, there was a substantial amount of work done, and, and that work still has, has good quality, quality to what the outcomes came out of that. Some of it is still yet unknown, until the MPDS permit comes back, we're not going to know exactly, application comes back, we're not going to know exactly what portion, if any, of the project we may still need to do, specifically in the lagoons, the storage, and whether any freeboard or stormwater work, anything might need to be done on a much smaller scale than anything we were discussing, no treatment, but, and also, there's some, still some unknowns around the, the funding and whether any principal forgiveness might come through. It's probably unlikely, because the green element was the recycle component, but we're trying to strategize about any creative way we can suggest some of that reimbursement or forgiveness. The Brez, that's on the agenda tonight, as, as a discussion and possible action, and a fairly lengthy update here, including the, the fact that Jim, Passanese, Bill Taylor, Kevin and I went down to Redding the day after the fire started. It was just beginning to get smoky, it's so sad what happened down there, my heart goes out to those folks. I was briefed and, and brought up to speed very well by, by the waterworks staff and our staff, and so I, I really feel like I have a very good understanding of the project now, and the drivers behind the project, the importance of the project, and the alternative analysis, how we arrived at the final design, and, and I'm a strong proponent of the project at this point. We can discuss that more when the, when the agenda comes up. The, a couple of missing, yet to be completed portions of the project include property acquisition there along New Skyway, and, but we have engaged Blackwater Engineering to do a preliminary investigation, and the, the, the plan is for, for that individual, Larry Cram, to work with Butte County, who presently does not have ownership, if you will, of, of the easement, the right of way to the road that they built on, that they inherited from the railroad years ago. That being said, there is a precedent that, that was set by one particular property there at the Railroad Depot, am I saying that correctly?
Yep.
That they acquired easement for their property through the railroad. So, we're trying to follow that path as a precedent to acquire property rights for the county, help the county acquire those rights, so we can acquire rights from the county. That's a little complicated, but that's what we're trying to accomplish with the property rights. It's hard to say how long that might take, primarily because the railroad's in question as a party to the action, and everybody knows how slow things move, move with the railroad. So, we're going to be cautiously optimistic about how quickly we can get that resolved. We're supposed to meet with, with that group, the Blackwater Engineering Group, here at the end of the month, and we hopefully will be able to give a, a more up-to-date update to the board here shortly.
Isn't there something that, by the fact that the county built on property that it didn't have, excuse me, easement, but isn't there something?
Grandfather clause.
Yeah, that if you, if you have been able to use it, or the, it's like when your neighbor moves the fence line.
Yes.
You let him do it for ten years, so you can't, ten years later, say, oh no, I want you to take your fence down.
And I'll butcher the language, but there's prescriptive easement, and there's?
Yeah, whatever it's called.
Whatever the term is for regular use of an easement in a certain way, and yes, that, that is a legal right, it's a lower legal right than a documented.
Then get, going through the?
The formal process.
Them acquiring it and then giving it back to us.
Yes.
I mean, couldn't they acquire it through that? That we've built it, even though we didn't have easement, so now we have easement by the fact that we built it? Should I mean?
Kevin may be able to speak to this a little better, but I think that's either the primary or secondary path that we would choose.
But it has to be, the county has to be the one to do it. So, we're trying to push the county into acquiring that title any way possible. There was another terminology of a quiet title action, that, that is, I think, more of the prescription easements type thing, like, we've had, we've used this, we've done this, there's, we've, we've basically acted like we own this for this amount of years, therefore, it's kind of like, you know, you own it, you know? So, there's a quiet title action that they're looking at. The best, the cleanest action would be what the depot did, was with a quick claim deed from the, from the railroad company. Railroad company quick claims it over to them, that's accomplished, then the county just gives us easement, an encroachment permit access, and everything's done. So, what we've basically done is, and Larry Cram was meeting with the county today, so he was supposed to get a, information back, but he hasn't come back to us yet, but he's supposed to be kind of handholding them through this process, and that would be the cleanest way possible, instead of us trying to take leadership of going, well, we're going to, we're going to put it in there no matter what, it's, it's a better way to kind of handle it. And, right now, the county is, if they're being handheld through it, they're going to be more open to it, because it is a problem for them. And we're solving their problem for them.
It's a future problem for them.
Yeah. One way or another, they're going to have to figure this out one day, you know?
Okay.
So, so that's kind of how we're accomplishing it.
So, that's the easement right of access issue. The other outstanding issue is, is less dramatic, and it's the sequoia process for circulating the documents for public review, and that's a, an SRF loan requirement. And we actually, we're ready to pull the trigger on that, and, and Jim and I spoke, and, and I wanted to address the action item, potential action item on the agenda tonight before we got, went ahead and proceeded with that, so I wanted to ask for direction from the board. But that's about a thirty-day process, and that, that should be put to bed. Ultimately, this board would need to approve the findings of that, of that sequoia process. Let's see. So, Keith, O'Brien and I, accompanied Director Kellogg, what's it been, Bill, a couple of weeks now, a week and a half ago?
Something like that.
And we, and we took, we spent the better part of the day discussing the project, the Brez project, specifically the pathway of the forty-two inch main, and we actually drove that main. I had asked Ladrini to put paint down and locate the main, and some of the narrower areas and the wider areas to get a better visual picture as a group as we drove through that, the accessible portions, which is the majority of the pathway. And I think it was time well spent. We had a lot of good conversation along the way, and weren't trying to change minds, just trying to inform and, and, and help explain the benefits of the project and the challenges of taking it down that pathway. So, let's see. We also met out at the water plant for the lake committee meeting, and we discussed a number of things. Jim gave a great plant tour, and discussed all the needed projects that are relative to the water treatment plan in the lake, and the ongoing projects, including the Brez project. So, and, and Mark was out there, as was Bill, and so we, it was time well spent, I really enjoyed it, and I think we all learned some things, and, so that's the Brez portion, the spillway is another. I'll need to work with Kevin to meet with the dam safety group, and Jen Terrier to discuss that project. We intended to get that scheduled soon. The AMR project update, Bill, you had asked at the last meeting some costs associated with these Firefly, they're not called Fireflies, we're removing Fireflies, we're replacing them with the Zinnor product. But I wanted to give you a quick update in this, within my report, that discusses the number of units that we've replaced to date, and the number still outstanding, the cost associated with what we've invested so far, and what's yet to be completed, and the total cost of the project. We've had several conversations with Zinnor to discuss the overall conversion project and the technology associated. There's a lot of detail that I won't bore you with, but we have made a great deal of progress, and, and as you know, the old system was failing for a number of different reasons, and one, primary among them, the company that supported them went out of business. But the technology was an older technology as well, so I do think this is a very wise investment that we've done, the vast majority of, so far, and we're trying to get this to the finish line. We probably have another three, four months to complete, and we're, we're taking it as we, as we, month by month, replacing the, the MIUs, and it's, I think it's going to turn out to be a wonderful project at, at its completion. We can answer some questions, if you have any questions about that, if you want me to pause here.
I, I understood at the outset that it was just to replace the failing, so are they all failing? Because I thought it was about six thousand that we approved originally, not all of them.
I'm not sure about.
But are they all failing?
My understanding is that?
I think we made a decision to move forward and go ahead and be proactive, and start getting ahead of them.
Where they failed.
Too.
But, but could we have a system where they coexist? We could have both?
This is backwards compatible, and that's part of the reason we chose this vendor, so, so we can support the existing system as we upgrade to the new system, but ultimately, we will have to transition to, to their repeaters and their?
Stealth unit.
Or gateways. Gateways. And as we move through this, fortunately or unfortunately, some of those devices have failed, and we've replaced them with the new units, so it's actually less costly to get to the finish line at this point, but I do strongly recommend that we complete this, as we have, and, and I, this is not on the agenda as an action item, but I, I'd like to bring it forward, perhaps at the next meeting for that requested action, but I wanted to give you an update, as Bill had requested at the last meeting. Bob?
Did Datamatic file the type of bankruptcy where they reorganized their debt? Could you get ten cents in the pocket?
Good question.
Are they gone?
I'm not sure.
It was chapter, what, chapter seven? It was the gone, bye-bye. Our creditors?
Fully defunct.
Gone, yeah. Yeah. And just a little backstory on, on Datamatic. What happened was, is the Datamatic had a unit that was supported by software that they, was proprietary, and the proprietary software was not theirs, so they were buying licenses of that software. So, what happened was, is they had all these failing units that they could take, and they could re, reprogram and get them back, but to re-lic, they had to re-license that software every time they reloaded it. And so, it just, the warranty issue just outrapped their costs that they could get. And basically, what happened was, they bought batteries that from Malaysia or somewhere overseas that were not, not up to par, and so, they, and they, they gave, based on law, they had to give like a ten-year warranty with a sliding twenty-year, and they couldn't keep up with the warranty issues associated with it. And we happened to have a system that was put in right close to the, to the time that they were getting all these failures that they had already done. So, our system was in, and then they had all these failures, and so we were kind of behind the curve on the failures. So, all their failures before that were getting replaced, but then they went out of business before we could get anything out of them, so.
This will be an improved system, by the way, there'll be less of the repeaters and the devices within the system, so the support cost, the operating cost will be lower, and the reliability should be higher.
Okay.
Maybe, and we can, the ones that we pull out that are still functioning, we can sell to some small water district.
Well, I'm afraid the batteries would die in route.
Just kidding. Just kidding. Have a garage sale, yeah.
So, finally, to the last section miscellaneous, and sorry if this is a little nonlinear, but I've, I've made a big effort to try to get to know personnel in all the different divisions, and, and I feel like I do have made good progress, and I'm super impressed with, with the staff, quality of staff as, as, as individuals and as professionals, and it's great to get to know these folks, and hopefully calm waters, if waters were not calm, and reassure them that, that they have their manager's support, and that Kevin and I are working closely together, and, and office staff, treatment, transmission and distribution, we're all one, one team and the board, and that we're, we're going to work together, and we're going to make this, continue to make this a great place to work, and, and focus on our product and, and our people, the quality of all the above. Just been, it's, it's been a great, I've had a great time so far, and I'm really enjoying it. As Ward said, I attended the Butte County and the Paradise Fire Safe Councils, and those are two great groups of folks, and if you haven't been, I encourage you to go visit, those are, those are open meetings, like all California meetings, right? And unfortunately, great timeliness, and there's, there's a lot of action items that, that I think we can develop and be more positive, one of which Jim mentioned, is the, the tabletop exercise that we're, we're going to try to get scheduled here the last week of August, Jim?
Thirty.
The thirtieth? And we've, if we could get feedback from the board as to your all's, your all's availability on the thirtieth, that would be wonderful. And if you're not available, that's fine, too, but we want you to know you're invited, and we're going to invite town, town council, their, their governing folks, and the Paradise Fire Council, Fire Safe Council, and any of the Butte County folks that might want to come from their Fire Safe Council. We want it to be a collaborative thing with all the relevant stakeholders in the room, and the last one we did, we, we did a similar FEMA tabletop here this month that was related to a scenario where the dam may have a partial or complete failure, and what, what do we do in that situation? That was more of a nationwide that was facilitated across the country by FEMA, and that was cool, because it had a lot of different entities, governmental and, and water districts and hospitals and, so, but this is sort of a similar but different kind of a thing, that we're PID, Jim in particular, is going to facilitate based on a, on a FEMA model, and he customized it to, to a PID, or to, to a Paradise Fire event, and, and what we would do in, in response to that. Obviously, there's the detailed emergency response and evacuation plan in place for, for Paradise and the Ridge, but we want to, it never hurts to get folks together and, and do a tabletop and, and talk about what might need to be improved, or how well we're planning. So?
Where's that going to be held?
That will be here in this room on the thirtieth at?
Nine AM.
Nine AM?
Yeah.
Can you, could I bother you to send us an email? Thank you, George, Jim.
And we'll get that out on our Facebook and, and all the other places we can get it out to the public. There's a limited room, but we're happy to, you know, get as folk, many folks in here as we can safely get in here and go through that tabletop. We talked about the lake committee and the garden tour, the garden club tour, which was really cool, because Ward's a pretty good guide, and I learned a lot about what this garden's about, and the fire safe aspects of it in particular. Thank you, Ward. Kevin, Emily and I met with the, with the two union entities, and, and we're continuing to negotiate through the labor negotiations with those folks. I feel like it's going in a positive direction. We, we talked about the backflow prevention, the tabletop. talked about the backflow prevention, the tabletop.
And I guess that's pretty much it. Sorry, but that was too lengthy.
I have comments, but I'm going to reserve them until we do the B-res thing.
Sure.
From the tour we had on the 42-inch.
Yes, sir.
And so I'll bring those up then.
Any questions from staff, or, I mean, from the board? Any comments from the public in regards to item number five? Okay, thank you. Six, treasurer's report.
Yep, yeah, my written report. Cash position right now is at 3.36. It's, we're moving up. We're, we're starting to see some of those reserve buckets starting to fill up, which is, which is a really good thing. You can see that our operating reserve right now is, and this is just based on priority, how prioritized each one is that we fill it up and then we move to the next. But rate stabilization and operation is filled up and we're filling up an emergency, emergency reserve. These are just kind of ballparks or just placeholders. It doesn't mean that we can't use emergency funds. The board has all priority on, on all these funds. So when it says non-restricted, it means the board has opportunity to use them in any way as possible.
I know that that's correct. But when we sent out that first bill at the beginning of the year where it broke down all the categories, is, is it difficult to, even though I know that they can be merged and utilized together, is there any way to separate just that?
We don't, the system doesn't separate it at this point.
It doesn't.
But we can separate it based on a percentage.
And that's what I was going to say, because wasn't it based on a percentage? And the only reason for that is I think that it'd be kind of nice for us to see what really technically was set aside for that, even though we can co-mingle.
Correct.
Still would be kind of nice.
I can do that for you.
Because our goal should be to set X amount there and have something that we only tap as necessary instead of just keep-
Yeah. So, and just remember, it wasn't specific to the reserves, it was just a reserve.
And I know that.
Yeah. And I can tell you the ballpark that we thought was about 700,000 on that per year for the reserves. But that did incorporate a portion for capital for that year. So, so as you know, capital kind of flows back and forth. So sometimes you're putting money in reserves and you're filling up these buckets and these buckets, but then you have a big capital and it sucks that money right out of there. So, and same with debt. Debt, debt kind of flows, ebb and flows.
Correct.
So right now, we've only made, what, $115,000 or 115,000 of debt service, but we know we have to make 900,000. And that's just going to, you know, that'll pop up like in August and it'll drop down. So those, so you'll see those reserve buckets kind of flowing just based on those. But I can get you the percentage of the amounts that we were expecting in there. Operational standpoint, we're right in line. Again, the budget workshop where we have that, I believe we have it scheduled.
Yeah, twenty-nine.
Yep. And so that's coming forward. I've been really kind of catching up from a lot of the stuff that I wasn't able to kind of get done through this last couple of months of other operations. So it's been kind of good to catch up, really refocus back on the budget. I do have estimated budget numbers in there. So when, when you're looking at this budget, it's not last year's budget, it's this year's budget numbers that are, we've estimated. And you can see that we're right on line. From a water sales standpoint, we actually beat our, our projected budget. So that's good. It means that our water sales, and remember, our water sales actually went down a penny from, from one year to the next. So, so water consumption is doing well. That's where we mostly are going to get our fluctuation of any type of, of revenue. So I think that we're in, we're in good shape on that standpoint.
First, and then you sell the options?
Oh, yeah, there's an E in there. Good catch.
Oh.
Percentages.
There are a percentage.
Operational, there hasn't been any fluctuations in that. We're pretty, pre-standard. Like I said, we made one, one debt service payment. One thing is that this, that you can see from 2015 to today, our debt service has really dropped. And that's, that's based on the board and some of the fiscal responsibility. Refinancing of debt's been huge. What we're seeing now is we're starting to see a bump back up into the interest rates. So we got some of the lowest that we're going to probably see for a long time, and we're locked those all in. So every one of our debt services is two and a half and below, or actually, no, our highest one is 277 and below. So that's pretty good interest rates that we've got locked in there.
Go ahead. Can I take you back to 46? Something that I, of course, I could wait until you're done. I'm sorry.
No, yes, ma'am.
On page 46, the, about center of the page, increased capacity fees, on the right column, it says 21,880. Where did that come from just recently?
Yep. There, there's a developer that has paid, gosh, and I, I looked at it too because that was a question I had. I know Anderson Brothers paid some.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And then there was a developer that paid, I think, five capacity fees-
Oh, I see.
On three-quarter inch meters. So someone's got five lots that they bought capacity fees all at one time on.
Got it, okay.
Oh, that was nice.
I can't think of the name. It's all the same name. It's a developer.
Okay.
Yeah. Because I didn't look at that. That was-
On that same page, I didn't see the, on the revenue, special refund or revenue fund? I didn't see any of the money for the Buy a Bloom campaign. And I know most of it was collected in that fiscal year.
Buy a Bloom on which one?
Well, like, you're looking at the, all the revenue on this page?
Mm-hmm.
For total revenue? And so I would imagine it would be under special revenue funds. That's where it would be entered?
Which one?
I'd have to look and see.
Because it's the same place where you put buy the fish?
I don't think we put it in there for, for the Bloom.
Oh, okay.
I don't think we put it in that Buy a Fish. We probably put it in an other revenue account that, like donations. Sometimes the donation, miscellaneous donations go into another revenue account.
Okay.
We wouldn't have put in the Buy a Fish.
Okay. Well, I, I know you didn't put it in Buy a Fish, but I would imagine it would go in that section.
Segregated. It probably went to another revenue fund.
Okay.
Um-
And then on page 48, I didn't see anything for actual, for the board expenses for directors.
I need, I need to break that out. That's one area that I haven't broke. I haven't broke that out yet.
No, most of us work for free, but not all of us.
I know. I haven't broke that out yet, and I need to. And that'll be one of my, kind of my wrap-up things that I normally, that's okay. No, that's a good, a good point. Okay. Debt service.
For the actual, not the estimated, for the actual.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's probably every month.
And for, for capital, the only thing that we've, we've, and you're going to, we're going, you'll get much more detail on this during the budget workshop. The only thing that we've spent this current fiscal year is for the B-res, which we've already kind of moved forward on that. And that's it.
Yeah.
And I'm looking forward to the budget workshop. And I'll just let you know, the audit is scheduled for November this year. So that's when it worked. And we have new auditors this year. So that'll be in November.
May I go back and beat a dead, a dead horse for a moment, or beat a horse? Hopefully I won't kill it. In regards to the reserve fund, often there's a percentage that various organizations deem as the appropriate amount to have set aside as an emergency. Has PID ever said, we need 6 million, we need-
It's percentage-based.
Okay.
And it's not on here, but it's actually in the budget.
Mm-hmm.
So I can pull that up for you. But they were set, and the percentages were set in the reserving policy, when the reserving policy was set.
I think I remember there being a line about that.
And so, and I, I don't want to throw numbers out there, but I can get those percentages for you.
Okay. When we deal with the budget, does, like you're saying-
And it's in the budget.
Don't need to know that tonight.
But that, that's a long-range target, right?
It is, yeah. Because we depleted it, or others depleted it.
Well, I mean, we're working on it.
It's minimum-maximums in the budget, or in the, in the reserving policy. So they want, they said, I'm just going to throw a number out. Operating reserve, minimum 17%, maximum 100%.
Yeah. I think I remember that table somewhere when, in the past when we've reviewed it.
Yeah. Bill?
My comment is that ever since these were established, the, we've never, this is the best we've ever done. And we're far from being, we spend 500,000 a month. And our reserve is, wouldn't cover three months on it. It's part of an operating fund, isn't, is actually designated in a way. And so we have, now we have some money there, but not near what the district needs as far as a reserve for emergencies and so forth. And so to me, this is not satisfactory. This is finally putting something in it. The actual budgeting and putting in these funds was done, what, two years ago, Kevin?
About two years ago, yeah. Yeah. I mean, the, the reserve policy was done two years ago. The biggest, the biggest thing that's, that's helped us was obviously the-
The bump in the fees.
Yeah, the bump in rates.
The increase rate.
But we haven't been able to meet the goals that were put in for them. So-
Yeah.
And of course, that was one thing I didn't win when we were revising the bylaws. We kept these things, and I think they're virtually worthless as to what we've managed.
Well, if we can have a solid goal and keep pushing for that, and maybe state an actual instead of a percentage at some future date here soon, state, we would, we are not there until we get to X number of millions, then we don't touch it unless it's a significant emergency.
Yeah, but we're talking about another $11 million in debt.
Yeah.
So, I'm-
But that can be separated.
Yeah, I know. But at the same time, I'm saying we, if-
Oh, I know, Bill.
Something broke big enough in the district, we wouldn't have the media funds-
Yeah, you're right.
And we'd have to go out and borrow money after borrowing 11 million, $800,000.
Yep, that's right. Yep, yep, you're right.
So that's my comment.
Mm-hmm. Any questions anymore from the board? Anybody from the audience? Okay, bring it back to the board for action on six.
I move we accept the treasurer's report.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I wanted to ask one other question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill.
Oh, I didn't reverse over to you. On page 52, is that part of the treasurer's report?
Yep, yeah, that is.
But Butte County RCD, I don't see any reference to that.
That, that's been paid for. So what they did is they took that contract and applied it to that grant. Because that contract that we had with them in the past, that we only did a certain portion of it, was, was absorbed through that grant that did the whole section of that forestry plan.
So that, that went through the Fire Safe Council. I know we talked about it. I didn't know how it turned out.
Yep. So that's been all absorbed.
So we don't know, hold in anymore?
Nope.
That's good. Thank you.
Yep. Okay, number seven. Approval of checks. I'm going to go ahead and read it. Approval of general fund check number 52147 through 52225 for the month of July 2018 totaling 500, 558,993.99.
Is that in the bank?
We did, but you, you raised your question right after we all voted. And you said aye. You said aye. I was, no, no, no. I heard you say aye.
Somebody should keep track.
Yeah, I was listening.
All right, I'll attempt to answer a question.
Do you want to finish reading that?
No, uh-uh, it's good enough.
Okay.
So, any questions of-
I just had a question on the LAFCO fees on page 57. Is that an annual fee that we pay to LAFCO?
Depends on what's happening.
It's on, which, operating expense, LAFCO?
It's going to be on L, so A, B, C, D.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I always look at the-
The percentages.
Well, page 50, I'm on page 57.
It's on page 57.
Bottom of 57.
Butte County Treasurer at the bottom.
Oh, it's Butte. It's not LAFCO.
Oh.
It says LAFCO operating expense.
Oh, yeah, that's an annual. It's an annual fee. So basically what they do is they take their budget and then they break it out by percentages of each one of the districts that they serve. And I wonder, I'm thinking, you might know more. I think they take the op, I think they take their operating revenue and they, and then they take the, the percentages of the total.
So July 1st, the bill gets generated and comes to us probably, huh?
Yep.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, there it is.
I had a question on page 60, middle of the page, vendor iron tree locate, relocations, deposit on moving EXP, deposit on moving expense. What were we moving where?
We were moving this guy named Ed.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, oh. Iron tree, I thought.
You were looking for three men and a truck, right?
Yeah, one big monster truck we removed.
It was the low bid. I did, I did a bid process.
Thank you.
That's cute. Okay. We got a lot of big trees in town, but I didn't think of it. No, no questions from any of you?
No.
Bill? You're going to wait until after we vote?
And on last, you were asking about lab fees last time. If you, Jim can maybe explain it, but they are for the, was it the-
It was for what I thought it was?
Yeah, for the test. What's that test that we're doing, the, the-
Oh, my man, true.
There you go.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah. That's what I thought it was, for this CTR, yeah. Because I looked at the list of Ann Light's and then I said, oh, that's what it is.
Yep. Yeah. And we're continuing to do that, and they're continuing to do it.
It was, I want to say it was, I think it was 7,000 or 13,000 worth of lab fees, and I've never seen that pie. And that's why-
It was quite a chunk, yeah.
So I figured there was a, one component must have been for the CTR.
Yep.
All right.
You're correct.
Before we leave-
Yep.
...the check register visit, I've got the attorney's fees that, which I thank you for. But it's June, no July.
We haven't received July yet. We haven't received July yet.
We haven't received July?
I checked.
That's nice of them, Kate.
We're asking them to put it off until December.
It's too, this is the earliest a meeting could be, so it's tough to get some of those out.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be like that other item. They'll be two months and one next time, and we'll all go, "Huh."
The size of their bill, we could hire our own attorney.
Any questions from the public in regards to this? Okay, if there are no further questions, motion please.
I'll move we approve check expenditures for July 2018.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to say as, as presented?
As read.
As read on the agenda.
Bill, now, I didn't hear you that time. Did you?
No, I-
You said yes? Oh, okay.
No, I didn't say anything.
Oh, that's, I didn't think I heard it.
I'm an old world.
Oh. Any, any opposed?
I have to say something.
Any opposed?
No.
I guess, I guess that's a yes vote, then. So it's five. Five to zero. Legal report, number eight.
There will not be a legal report this evening. We spoke with our council and decided that we would engage her by teleconference for the closed session.
Okay, good.
Did not need her for the regular session.
Save us money. I love it.
Yep. Number nine, unfinished business, none. Number 10A, Assistant District Manager position description. I need to apologize for something to the board. Georgiana is good about getting information to me. And because I have been working long hours and went on vacation early, I missed the opportunity to review the agenda before it was too late and got up to my campsite and was reading and noticed this. And this is something that we have managed to let the cart get way ahead of the horses on this. We have never agendized even talking about this position prior to now to even see if we wanted this position, much less come up with all of the classification and description and so on and so on. So if this is something that you all think you want, we can put this on the agenda because the standard procedure for this should be that if we, as a board, approve of the potential for this position, then we need to decide how we're going to do it. And then it should go to the administrative and personnel committee to review, bring back to the board, make changes as necessary, and go back whatever, back forth whatever we need. So I am going to postpone this for now and put it on the agenda next time, back at the beginning of the operation, unless you all want to talk about it briefly and see if we even choose to do this. But we can't discuss it too much because it's something that never even got approved.
What's the protocol for the board to discuss this?
Well, it's an agendized item. But again, like I said-
I'm not in it right now, but I mean-
Well, we just put it on-
I thought this was decided, I thought it was decided when we hired our district manager.
I don't require, remember, pre-deciding that we were going to automatically have-
Move in that direction.
Did we ever discuss it as a board here?
Well, then this would be the first step.
Minutes?
This would be the first step to discuss it.
Okay. Well, then if we, if we consider, I wanted to ask Emily if we can take action on something that was never approved to even move this direction.
Emily did give input into this, and I kind of hate to speak for her, but she basically said that it could be discussed, but in- said that it could be discussed, but any, any pay kind of discussion would have to be done within the negotiation, the normal negotiation upon the contract renegotiation of the employee, is my understanding.
Yeah, the... Just some backstory, too, is that our policy does allow for any director to put an agendite on it, on the agenda. So, this was Director Solak who brought this forward and brought it forward. There, you can make a decision on a job description and prove a job description at any point in time, based on how you guys as a board want to act. If it was a negotiation with me when it comes to salary, then that would have to be within the proper negotiations, the contract would have to be opened up and all that. But from a, from, and does that sound about right?
That's what I understood Emily.
From Emily was saying is that if you wanted to talk about a job description, a change of job description, a reclassification of job description, then that is, you have the ability to do that at this point, based on the agendite, agendized item.
I just want to make clear, Director President Wendland, that you realize this is, and it's not an additional position, it's a reclassification of our chief financial officer. We're not hiring someone new. There'd be no...
They're correct.
Just a reclassification of our existing chief financial officer.
But it really kind of is, it's putting another...
Yeah, but there'll be, but it'll be, it'll be the assistant district manager's job to be the chief financial officer. It's just that this will make a permanent designee for the absence of the district manager, and assistant district manager will act in his stead. There'll be no...
Yeah.
And I'll bring the notes from when we do discuss it.
I wouldn't mind speaking on it if I'm allowed.
Yeah, go ahead, because I have some fairly strong feelings on it, but go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, this is, this is not meant to be any kind of a increase in salary at this point or anything like that. If you look at other water districts, many other water districts have an assistant district manager, it's very, very common, okay? And the, the financial responsibilities are in that position. And I thought that we were ripe for that here, to bring, to bring this together. One of the things, one of the things that I noticed when I first came on the board was that there was no, there was really no chain of command, a formal chain of command as to who is in charge when the district manager is away, okay? So, I mean, I was actually shocked when I saw that. So, you know, in the past, and up to this point, our district manager goes on vacation, or heaven forbid, is sick, that person is still in charge, and he's, he or she has had, been available by cellphone. Well, you know, that, that's not the way to do it, because when a person goes on vacation, they need to relax and forget about the job and detach. And that's what, that's what I'm aiming at here, is that, you know, we've got, we've got a way for the district manager to separate himself from, from our district, even though it's a wonderful district. But, you know, that's something that's really needed, to have that physical separation, okay? And the other thing is that I think it's real positive for the employees to know that in advance, they know that whenever Ed, whoever's sitting in Ed's position is away or gone, that they know who to go to, okay? Because we don't have that in our, in our organizational structure right now. And I think this is, there's some really, some positives be gained here. And so, this, this position, I worked on it, Ed helped, and of course, Kevin did as well, we all got together, and we, we were just kind of going back and forth, and we basically melded some other positions that we had. I had, I had some examples, I went and got examples from, you know, other districts. And then we put in, we just melded it in, brought it in, and we, and he still has his functions as chief financial officer in this position. And to me, this makes a whole heck of a lot of sense. Like I said, I, I just can't believe that we do, we operate the way we do, expecting the manager to be in charge twenty-four, seven, three-sixty-five. That just doesn't make any sense to me whatsoever. So, that's, that's my position, that's how I feel, that's what, that's what, why I brought this up. And I think it builds great teamwork as well. There already is good teamwork going on here, I can see, we can all see it. But I think this actually just solidifies that, make, formalizes it, and makes it, makes it a great, a great team situation here, so. So, that's, that's what this is all about. It's really an update. We need, we need an update. There's a lot of positions, we're gonna see another update in another position, you know, here shortly tonight. But this, this is really needed, I think, at the top of our organization. You know, you have to have that clarity, to me, at the top of the organization. If you don't have that, I mean, it's, it's, anyway, I just think that it's very important to have that, so.
Okay, I can understand your position. I personally don't think it's needed, I don't feel that, to me, that if you were to simply in the job description of the CFO, put in a, a sentence, a small paragraph, just simply stating, like you said, "In the absence of the manager, in the event of vacations, further education, illness, the CFO would step in to fulfill his obligations." But then, if we were gonna do that, then by the same token, it ought to be reciprocal. In the event the CFO, in the manager's description, in the absence of the CFO, the manager should be, it should be just reciprocal verbiage. In the absence of the, because what, what happens when he leaves? Do we have a position to fill that? You see, because we have a trained enough manager who would be able to also fulfill the obligations on a temporary basis, you know, the same thing, same verbiage.
The district manager already has the ultimate fiscal responsibility and check signing authority and expending authority higher than Kevin, so that's already in place.
But is that stated?
That doesn't change.
Is that stated, though, in his job description? I don't recall. It's been a while since I've read it.
I believe it's in the, in the manager's.
Anyway, that's just my strong feeling, is that that's, that's adequate.
Okay.
Just, just a sentence saying that he is, he will fulfill, fulfill the obligations in, in an absence, so. Anyway, that's my opinion, so.
Okay, I'm an old dog, and I, several years ago, we revised Kevin's description, is his job, to try to give him some room away from the manager. And in reality, it didn't work, but we tried. And what George did, I think, was quite adequate. If he was going out of town, he would say, "Okay, I'm gonna be gone, Kevin's gonna do that, and he's got my phone number, okay? And if anything comes up, he'll call me, and we'll talk about whatever the situation is, emergencies, what have you." And we have a real experienced crew right underneath Kevin and the fuel staff and in the water treatment plant. So, they know what to do in situations like that. And the manager still had to say, and if he was gonna go, and didn't, like he went through a canal thing, tour, obviously, I don't think the communications would work very well, but the place went along. It was made sure that Kevin was going to be here when George was gone. And it was all done verbally, with understanding through the board. The board and, and our bylaws, if we have an emergency and the manager isn't here, the board actually has the responsibility for that, to work with staff to take care of it. It's right in the bylaws, there's notices, how many hours, and what so forth, it covers. This thing is something I think has to be put into the bylaws. If you're gonna put it into the bylaws, it has to go to the administrative committee first, and that's the procedure we used on the last time we revised Kevin's thing. And then it comes back to the board with any suggested thing, go to legal at the same time, whatever, but it goes through that, and then it comes back to the board. It doesn't come like this, a fish just caught out of water and tossed on the table, and because there's not time to reflect. When I first read this, or read part of it, and I looked at all the work that's been put into it, and I just thought, "We don't need an assistant manager on staff, regardless of what other water districts do. If they're a huge district, I can see where they can do it, but we have forty employees here, we have responsibilities broke down, described throughout our bylaws." I think this is, this is the worst part of government, in my mind, because you're putting all this in here, and you give all this ground to argue over. Who's responsible? Who does this? Who does that? Was this followed or was it not followed? And I just like to strike it. And if the best that can happen with it is put it to the administrative committee, and the staff can meet with administrative committee, then it can come back to the board with their recommendation. That's why these committees are gone. It's not good to go around the committees, as long as you understand the basic principles of the government in this country is that committees, like in the House and the Senate in California, has a committee to review all the legislation, then from the committee that goes back to the general, where all the different elected representatives are. Okay, so we're the elected representatives, we're the legislature of BID, and we've been elected or appointed by the people in the district. And that's where our ultimate responsibility lies for the financial health of the district and for the running of the district, even though we only have authority in a meeting like this tonight. Otherwise, committees can't pass anything in their own right on new rules or something, it has to come back to this board to approve it. And something like this usually ends up on two trips here to, for the board, you know, like I got this thing, and I'd been having other things going on in my life, and I didn't really sit down and read it, and I'm going, "This is, it's not dealing." And I, I'm glad to hear it's mostly your idea, and I think you're two years on the board, and you've just hopefully learned a lesson. You take something like this, and you present it a different way to the board, to a committee, to hear, and then back again, because that's how we modify the bylaws.
You can certainly go to the administrative.
And this is the modification.
I don't have a problem with that, I would just, like I say, this was something that we did discuss as Ann brought up.
We did discuss, all of us.
Yes.
Except Bob.
I understand, that's a discussion, there wasn't a vote on it.
Yeah.
No.
I didn't pay much attention to it at the time, because I was more concerned with getting Ed hired and getting that taken care of, and that was something of the future. You may have discussed it, I don't remember discussing it. This is something different, I didn't see anything like this presented in a closed session.
Well, there was nothing presented, but we discussed it, so that, and it was a pretty good discussion. But that, that's okay, like I said, I don't have a problem with it going to the administrative and personnel committee, I, I'm fine with that. But the point is, I think it's, I think it's, it's a good thing to do, I think it's an appropriate thing to do, and, yeah, I'd like to see it go to that committee and then come back to us, that's fine. I don't have a problem with it at all.
Hey, I'm sitting over here saying, I think, boy, at the time.
What's that?
Yeah. Anyway, so, but we, we can take action on it and find out what direction we choose to go, so.
I'd like to speak as well.
Oh, yeah, by all means, I'm just gonna open up both of you.
Just to preface my comment was, I don't have any problem. Organizational management one-on-one says, "You gotta have a number-two guy, maybe even a number-three person." You know, I was in a paramilitary organization, the chain of command. If my boss dropped dead, I knew who I was working for the next day, no problem. What I have a problem with this is, and it's not, I mean, like, like Dan says, you can, you can add a sentence here and say, "When the district manager's gone, the CFO is in charge." Now, is a CFO in charge, if, if Ed's on vacation for a month, does he get Ed's pay for a month? Okay? Well, I don't know. Okay? In some places, you do. Or in some places, it's after two weeks or after thirty days, and there's, there's a lot of rules and civil service and all that that govern this stuff. My question is, if, if we went this way, there's a salary spread between these two guys, I don't care what the number is, but it's, it's a percentage, okay? Is that percentage gonna stay the same, or is this going to involve a raise?
As presented, it's not, right now.
Well, as presented today, but, but what is the plan?
And I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything contractual that says when the district manager's on vacation, the assistant district manager would...
Get a bump.
Get a, yeah.
Get a what?
Get a bump, have a, have an increase.
Okay. Ed, are you, are you at the top of your salary range?
No, no, I don't believe so at all.
Okay, do you have steps to get to that range?
Honestly, I'm not sure what the range is, it's a contract.
Well, it does, what, my question is...
I don't know if there is a range.
Every time you get a step raised, does he get a raise?
No.
These two have the separate contracts.
I know, I know. But what if his contract is tied into his contract that says, "He'll always be eight percent behind him?"
That's not that way.
Well, but it could be, right?
Well, it'd have to be approved by this board.
I know, but that's, that's the question I'm throwing at you.
That's where you're going with it, yeah.
In past practice, no, it has not been that way. I can't foresee that it would be.
Okay, well, this is new, and, and my question is, what's the newness gonna bring? And it's just things to throw out there, and I, and I think, like I, like I said at the beginning, I think we need to meet and hash this stuff out, rather than just throwing out a job description. I'm not opposed to it, I just want to know all the details.
I could, I'm perfectly fine to send it to the committee, that's great.
Absolutely, no.
Okay. I just wanted to say, again, because, as I said before, the having the designee, I believe in this, and also, for all the, the short time I've been on the board, but I remember listening to a past board member, he would bring this up almost at every meeting about hiring from within, promoting from within, what a good practice it was in his own business, and we saw how well Kevin did when, in the absence of a district manager. And I think that by this position, you would be solidifying a promotion from within, and you, we would have to go through what we did, that long-drawn-out recruitment that we went through. That was another reason I thought that that would, you know, you're grooming someone to be the district manager.
True.
Because no one works forever, everyone's, all of us get to retire eventually. Hallelujah. And, and I, I just thought, I was, I really became a proponent of that, of that philosophy, where I wasn't before. And that was another reason I thought that this was a good move for the district's part.
So, we're limiting our worldwide search to one person?
Yeah.
Basically, that's what we're doing, okay.
Well, it doesn't happen.
And I hadn't thought of that aspect of it, but, you know, that might, that might be good, it might be bad, yeah.
Just, just about what we went through for, to get Ed.
Through talking here?
Thank you.
Open to the public.
Yeah, look, let's do some history first. This is the People's Water Company. Previous board was contentious and argumentative amongst themselves and with the people, and didn't listen. So, what did we end up with? After exorbitant rate increase proposals, exorbitant salaries, numerous executives paid over a hundred thousand dollars a year, we had a recall. Now, granted, some of that information is a little wishy-washy, but you know, from the public's perspective, we did not have the board that we deserved to represent us to run this company. So, what we do is, we expect to get a little bit more in the way of your level of professionalism to us about what we're going, this is springing at us, that's not, that's not fair, and it goes against transparency. And typically, in most, in most boards, you find a rationale for something before there's a formal agenda item, so that you can explain, "This is something that we're looking at as a potential necessity." You know, you do it every year for budgeting. We know that, that's a, that's a specific. But things that typically occur on the agenda, you have these discussions in advance, it needs to qualify somehow to say something, "This is a board agenda item, it's gonna be agendized in advance so that we can see what it is that we're talking about, so that the people understand what it is that the board is going to do." You don't spring it on us at the last minute, that's just plain not fair. But here's the thing, we, we have too many people here who are so good at their jobs, from here and up there and in the field, two people can be gone, and this place runs like a clock. He's already said how much he appreciates the professionalism of this staff. Let's look at this. How many times, when George and Kevin were playing golf midweek, was somebody in charge here? I used to see him at Tuscan Ridge. Who was in charge here? And guess what? While they were gone playing golf, nothing went wrong. This place runs fine. You don't need more managers. But here's a point that I think really bugs the people. When George Barber had a two-title position, he was paid a certain level. So the board was presented with, no, let's give him a three-person title, a district general manager. And suddenly, he's getting paid more. Same job, same description. There's no reason to add new titles to existing positions. And frankly, we've already known that one person can run this place just fine for over a year. We just don't need this. And frankly, the people are not happy about it. It's not just me, the feedback I've already got. Thank you for your time.
I rise to say, Mark, you need to listen to this man carefully on the rerun of this tonight. When you go home, you can play this on YouTube, it's there. And Facebook, whatever, you can watch it. Remember, that's how you used to be two years ago. So where have you went? Because that's not the guy that we wanted to be in that position. And I'm sorry to have to scold you in public, but you know, some people just fly off the chicken coop for no reason. And I don't know where you're going, but you're trying to get out of the yard. Remember, you're a chicken, okay? You're not, you're not an eagle, okay? So I have trouble with that. The other thing is, I apologize to you, Ed. I'm sorry, because here's why. Because when the public looks at it and somebody's trying to name an assistant manager, what that says to me is, hey, the new guy can't handle the job. So, so I don't know, you see what you, you did to this man? He barely started and you're, and you're off telling him he needs, he needs somebody to babysit him. And I'm not sure that's true, and I certainly hope it's not true. So, and that's nothing against Kevin. Everybody knows Kevin can run the job. Everybody knows Kevin would have probably had the job, but he got tied up with George, and that killed him. Everybody knows that. We can all say it out loud. That's what happened. We know it. Okay? And I'm sorry, Kevin, that it worked out that way, because you are a good man and you can run the thing. But now we have a new manager, and I believe he can handle the job, and, and also, also, I want somebody to blame, okay? He's, he's in charge, I don't care if he goes to Timbuktu and this thing blows up, I wanna blame him. That's who I wanna blame. He's the one making the big bucks, he's the one making the decisions. I want him to keep those decisions, and I want him to take the blame and the credit for whatever happens to it. And so I, I just don't, I'd just like to see this thing melt away. I don't know what you guys are thinking. I, it's, it's, I'm left for words. I just, I just don't get it. I hope, I hope you see the light. And I don't see it as a, as a form of respect or nothing for Kevin, and, but I do see it as a form of disrespect for the new manager, because you basically told this man, hey, we don't think you can handle the job, so we need to get another assistant manager to back you up. You know, so, I think about it. If you guys feel like you hired a good man, let him run with it, you know? And, and you're right, you're right. We have way too many, we're top-heavy, most governmental jobs are top-heavy in supervisors, and the guys standing out on the shovels, it's like WPA, you know? Two coming, two going, two crapping, two mowing, you know? And so we've got, we've got six guys that are capable of doing the job, but only two of them are in the ditch with a shovel. So let's be careful about how we promote people. Thank you.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks, Lauren.
Anyone else? All right, back to the board to discuss it further. Well, maybe, maybe we need to do something like, take this and agendize it the first of next year, and start at the bottom and work up, and talk about it, and see where it goes from there. And also, that would give the manager a little, new manager, a little bit of time.
I was gonna bring this up under director's conference. I think the board is ready to have a closed session with the manager and go over personnel matters within the district. Nobody else, just Ed and the board, so that he understands what we were after and so forth. There isn't any confusion on communications. And we can talk about staff and what we think, and we can be more blunt than we can in public, and more considerate, hopefully. But I think it's time we did that to help him and help ourselves. We build a good relationship between the board and the manager. And I don't think anybody else needs to be.
Bill, excuse me. I guess I, with Emily not being here tonight, my understanding of closed session rules only involve disciplinary actions for employees, when you talk about employees, so I don't know that that, I'm not for sure, but I don't think that that would meet the legal standard for a closed session.
I think it will, you just have to change the wording a little bit.
I, I'm happy to do so, but I'd like to get a le, our legal opinion.
It would be for next month's agenda anyway. We couldn't do it tonight.
Anyway, or, or the following, or the following, or something.
I'm happy to get direction from you guys at any time, in any fashion, but I just wanna make sure it's legal.
Okay, well, it's back to the board. Let's vote up or down, or some direction or something, and so that we can proceed.
I'll make the motion that we table it to the next month.
Would you, could I bother you to expand that a little bit to?
Go to the administrative committee. That's Mark would agree to that.
Sure, that's great.
Table it to next month, and it comes out of the administrative committee when they, I should say, table it, if not the administrative committee, decide when the board.
Yeah, defer till January, administrative committee meeting meantime.
Or, or something, we'll, I'll talk to you, we'll discuss it, talk to the manager, see when we can get, okay?
January, sorry.
Or something. Yeah, it's up to us. We'll, we'll work with the manager on it. Is that verbiage specific enough?
Sorry, I mean, I have a motion to table this item to next month and present the job description to the admin.
He didn't say job description. He just means, I think, the whole topic. That's the reason I was trying to get a little more concise.
The whole topic on just this?
Just this, just bring it back officially, then send it then to the committee.
Go to the administration committee, and they bring it back to the board. And it might be, rather than saying next month, if you want the administrative committee feels that they've done their work.
Yeah, don't lock us in, so.
So instead of tabling it, we're gonna send it to the, to the administrative committee?
That's what I was.
For next month, so maybe October.
I'll talk, I'll talk to you. Yeah, that sounds good. Because in, end of the summer, it's, it's tough to try to get things together.
It's for me.
Okay.
As soon, as soon as feasible, I mean, if you're gone.
You wanna clarify that, you wanna clarify that motion again, Georgia?
So the motion is to refer this agenda item to the assistant district manager position to the admin and personnel committee, and then they would bring that.
Bring it back.
Bring it back to the board.
Okay, that is correct.
Thanks, Bill.
Need a second? Did I officially get one? Okay. Any, any questions more on that? Is it very clear, crystal clear? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Five to zero. B, water quality technician position, Mr. Manager.
Mr. President, if I may, there's been some further discussion around this job description change with the, with the union representative, and I'd like to ask that this be tabled until, hopefully, next meeting. Not to, so, so as to avoid confusion and conflict with the union negotiation.
Okay.
I think that can be done, yes.
Could I ask for a very necessary thing to go to the necessary?
Oh, okay. We have a five-minute, five-minute break for certain necessities of life.
Do you need to take action on this, to table it before we do that?
If you just request a tabling, we don't have to take action on that, do we? That's just a request, is it good enough?
Well, you guys have to agree to table it.
Okay, then we do have to.
Okay.
We can do it four to one.
Okay.
I move that we table this item 10B until the next month's meeting.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Bill, you say aye?
Aye.
All right, five-minute break. It is eight minutes after. All right, back to 10C. By the way, Bill, we voted yes for you on that last one, so. I heard, I heard you say, yeah, I heard, he heard you say yes from.
I heard. I didn't get it.
Yes, would not have been pleasant. Okay, 10C, Mr. Manager.
Yes, thank you, Board, President. So the, the B res, we've discussed this at length earlier, and, and I know that there's been multiple presentations given to the board in the past from, from our Engineered Water Works. And as I mentioned earlier in, in the manager's report, I've, I feel like I've really gained a deep understanding of the project and the driving factors of the, of the project and the, and the improvements that it will bring to the district upon completion. Most importantly, fire protection, added fire protection for the entire system, for the A-zone in particular, it would increase the stored volume of water for the district from 2 million gallons presently up to 5 million gallons upon the completion of the project. It would add redundancy in the pump stations, two pump stations that would feed A-zone as opposed to the one now. It would add redundancy in tank storage at the B-res site. It would alleviate the, the problem that we have presently of not being able to access the lower third volume of the existing B-res as it's constructed presently. It would avoid additional investments into a, what I would describe as a substandard design of a membrane-covered and lined reservoir that is discouraged by California and all national regulatory agencies. It would give fire protection ability to the water treatment plant itself, something that perhaps we haven't given any thought to. So presently, as I understand it, there's about 150 gallons a minute flow available at the water plant to put out a fire at the water plant. If a fire were to threaten the, the facility there, this would allow all the flow and pressure from the pump station to be diverted in, in an emergency to help fight a fire at the water plant, something to be seriously considered. It would allow redundancy in the pathway of the transmission line leaving the plant from what we presently have, which is a sole, one individual 42-inch main, as Jim Passanisi mentioned earlier, a length of two and a half miles from the water plant to the splitter box down Skyway, below Lofte Lane, below Bel Air. And add a 16-inch transmission main from the plant down New Skyway that would ultimately end up at the A-tank itself. The, as I understand it, in, in the big fire that Paradise and the Ridge experienced back in '08, there were big challenges across the system, but specifically in the A-zone. And especially when folks, you know, were evacuated and turned on their sprinklers, put them on their rooftops, and left their, their homes. And obviously, everyone understands why anyone would do that. But apparently, what happened was that pressures and flows were diminished greatly and far below acceptable, acceptable fire protection levels. So, again, you don't have to look very far. There's what, 18, 20 wildfires raging in California right now, and they're only getting worse and, and more frequent. And I think we would be remiss as a district not to pursue this project to completion, and, and that's the action that I'm asking for this evening.
Any comments from?
I appreciate the Water Works explanation that was provided is really, really good.
Yeah, very clear.
Yeah, very clear.
And I, I just piggyback on what you said. I agree with everything you said, only I would have started with water quality. That would have been my first one.
Yes, ma'am. And to, and to that, and to that point, excuse me.
With her background, we understand that.
And, and yeah, you're correct, although I guess with fires raging, that, that jumps out at me. But yes, water quality, in, in the, in the incidence of, of any vandalism or terrorism or however you wanna describe it, that someone got into the side and tore up that membrane, the entire system would be affected, and we would be under a boil water advisory until such time that we could do emergency repair. That's the, that's basically our entire source water is stored or flows through that B-res. So that water quality is a, a high priority in, in this project.
I will, I, just out of curiosity, nobody really cares probably, but I have bounced this off of three people now, actually bored them significantly, but, you know, said, as a director, I'm faced with this quandary. It's gonna cost several million dollars more to go around Skyway, but the, the improvement and the added security and, and storage and so on, and then I would take five minutes and explain to them what I'm doing, and tell them, you guys have hired me to represent you, what do I do with this? Sure, it's gonna cost us more, but I think the benefit's gonna be greater. What is your opinion? And all three of them, even though they knew that it was gonna be an impact to their wall, and all three of them kinda grudgingly went, tough decision, but, you know, probably worth it. So it's, it's a hard thing. From my perspective, I support the whole concept now, knowing that it's gonna cost. The only reason that I'm sometimes with Bill a little bit on this is because I'm still worried very heavily about what the whole spillway dam situation is gonna be. And if we go ahead and proceed with this, when we don't have to, it's really a good idea too, but we don't have to. And if we go ahead and take that step and start spending these vast amount of money, monies, even though they are borrowed, of course, it's not always good either, but then what happens then, and all of a sudden, we get hit with a $50 million, whatever, from the state? How in the world are we gonna make this work? I, I don't know. Does that extra $10 million, 10 or 11 million dollars gonna make much of a difference in the overall plan? Some, but not a huge amount. So, this is what I do in my mind.
Dan, I appreciate those comments. And, and yeah, there's, there's a number of black swan events that could occur, and certainly the spillway is one of them. I guess I would only add that in that scenario, there are thousands of dams across the country that are, that are not in compliance with present-day regulations for, for, excuse me, for high hazard status. We were undertaking a project in Kentucky as I left to improve a dam, to get it to that status. But we're hardly the only one in that boat, and, and that doesn't make it any better of a boat, but that, to, to mandate improvements for Magalia in particular, I think would be problematic for the state to enforce. That's just my personal opinion. Paradise, I feel that, it's hard to say. I don't think we're gonna find significant deficiencies that we'll need to remedy at Paradise, and that is, of course, our primary source. And to your point of the costliness, comparative costliness, not to be disagreeable, I did ask those questions about the alternative analysis of, of the two pathways, were we to choose the, the parallel to the existing 42? And according to the engineer's analysis, if anything, it would be more costly to, to go adjacent to the 42 with, with additional excavation and.
Interesting.
Et cetera. Certainly no more, no more, significantly no more. And then ease of access to the new Skyway and, and other advantages of taking that pathway, but primarily to separate the two, to, to gain true redundancy where there are failure. And, and another thing to keep in mind, and not to go too deep here, but on the, the additional space at the 42, adjacent to the 42, we should, in my opinion, leave that as be for the potential replacement of that 42 when that time comes. And that time will come. That's a 60-plus-year-old line at or beyond its useful life in some opinions. And presently, we can't isolate that line to determine exactly how structurally sound it is. We're confident in its, in its structural soundness. But it would allow us to both isolate it, determine how structurally sound it is, check it, inspect it, and ultimately replace it adjacent, within that footprint, so.
Oh, I know we don't. And I told people, I said, if for some reason something happened to that 42-inch line, we could be down for two weeks, three weeks. We have no idea. Because it's.
And it would affect the entire system, and we would be under a system-wide boil water advisory. It would be, it would be a difficult thing to deal with.
Add our, a little bit of an aside, but at a recent meeting, the Republican Central Committee that I belong to, I did speak with the representatives from Nielsen's office, Dolly's office, and Gallagher's office, and thanked them for meeting with us, because the same representatives were at that as they were with us, Kevin. And I told them, I said, don't let your bosses forget to keep pushing this down there, keep pushing this, because there's no way we can afford to replace this on our own, so.
And by the way, there's a timeliness to the funding. There is a shelf life on the funding.
Oh, that's correct.
And so, and so were we to delay significantly our progress forward, that funding could go away.
Yeah.
Plus, it's really good interest rate as well. The SRF funds.
Very low, very low.
The new SRF loans will probably be at a lot higher, a much higher rate in the future.
Yeah, I think we're almost 77, so. Sure, you're right. Okay. Sure.
I went on a tour with Kevin and, or Keith, I'm sorry, Keith and Ed, and on the tour, it became very evident that we haven't maintained fire protection with a 42-inch line. There is one place of approximately a quarter of a mile, that it saw a brush right on the There is one place of approximately a quarter of a mile that it saw a brush right on the top of the line. And if you had a fire in that, there's enough tonnage of firewood and everything else in it, you'd probably greatly damage the 42-inch line from the top down and melt, even possibly melt, because we, on the tour, there was, Keith had the knowledge, but he says it's anywhere from four to six inches of cover and maybe someplace in the heat, and the line is buried.
I've seen places where it's exposed.
Well, we didn't see it on the tour.
Saw it a few years ago.
Okay. There was no great sliding or other things that had taken place. Keith talked about water drainings coming down and having to put rock in to keep it from eroding on the downhill side. In some cases, it's quite steep down there. But it was very easy for the pickup to drive on top of the water line or down where it had been worked in. But on both sides, there was fire material that needed to be cleaned. There, no place was there 50 feet of...
Clearance, yeah.
We don't even know where the right-of-way is. And we need to find out where the right-of-way is, so we know where we can actually go in and clear brush and spread it. So that was one thing that did come out. As far as the direction the pipe is, does, just to follow the hillside, is not a straight shot. It goes in and out. So, but to me, there was still room to run the, to me, it's a gravity line. You don't need any pumps on it. Until you get down to pump station two, we went in and looked at the equipment and noticed that the, Keith showed us the gauge, and it was a 20 PSI for the water going up to A. Obviously, that's not enough water. What I have questions about is, we've got an $11 million project, and it's got everything tossed in it. This thing goes back to George's proposal in it, and it's an engineer's dream, as far as I can see, and this is my opinion, that everything is tossed in, including the kitchen seat. And I'm going, "Wait a minute. Can we back up and take what's the most important part of it? And that would be increasing the water pressure to A. Now, can we do that in a different way?" Then what is proposed right now, which is quite expensive, and can we do it without doing the tanks immediately? It's like the B-res. They figure it's going to be two years till we replace them, and two years of financing would be tied up somehow. The thing to me is that you don't replace them immediately. There's parts of the B-res that's in danger of burning up next to the Mobile Home Park up there. It's grown over. There's been no work on it, just like on the 42-inch main. In other words, one thing we've really fallen behind over the years, and I can remember bringing this to the board about four years ago, because a friend of mine in my lodge says, "Did you see where that 42-inch lane has all the Scotch bra and stuff on it?" And I said, "No, I don't know, but I'll bring it up." So I brought it up as a board member and said that they would look into it, and nobody was, you know, pat on the back and said, "Oh, yeah, I'll go look into it." Nothing happened. So, right now, in a fire in that area, not only would it endanger our own main line to town, it'd also endanger Ed's home sits uphill from it. So I don't need to explain what's going to happen that way. And then on the other side, it drops down, straight down into the canyon that is a little So I have a different way of looking at it, and I would say, we need to split up the project, break it into pieces and see what those pieces cost, and then put priorities on it so that we don't borrow $11 million. We owe about eight, seven million, but we don't have $2 million in reserves. We don't have enough money in reserve to pay for the engineering study on it. We're having to borrow that money, $800,000. So I'm going fiscally, this is, does not make good sense. This is what broke the back of the old board. We, you know, 17 million, and if we needed any more, we used up $1,200,000 on the $17 million project, and that was all the reserves we had. And we've never been able to build them back up since then. And that's why I keep talking in these meetings, we've got to get these reserves built up. We've got to have that, so if something does happen, we have the money or the wherewithal to take care of it. Now, the 2% money is going to, some of it is going to close off. It's been in emails. If you get to the Water Works' emails, you'll see that it's mentioned in there recently. But there's no prediction on what the entrance rates will go. It's bond money that they put out, and there's just so much of it, and everybody's trying to get a piece of it. So to me, we haven't secured the two, Kevin, tell me if I'm wrong, but we haven't secured the $11 million at 2%.
We have letters of intent, don't we?
Yeah, we haven't finalized the package yet, so I believe with the package, once the package is finalized, they'll lock in the interest rate on the construction loan.
So we don't have the line credit security?
Yeah, but the interest rate, I don't predict is going to fluctuate tremendously.
Yeah, but we haven't got the money secured.
I would still estimate, no matter, even if it's in a year, it would still be under 2% on our interest rate. Might not be 1.7.
Okay, but the point I'm making is we're moving ahead, or it's proposed that we move ahead, and we do not have the money secured to move ahead. And I propose that we look at this thing and see if we can't do something to move the pressure up at A-zone that doesn't require the additional pipeline at this point. In other words, can we, we talked a little bit about the pumping station over there, and quite, part of it is quite old. It was fun to see that it's all equipment's well-cared-for, and new electrical board service had been put in there, and everything looked great. But I don't know if we, I asked the question at the time, I said, "What if we put another pump in?" And Ed didn't think so, but I don't think there's been any serious consideration.
We haven't studied it on an engineering level, but the suction delivery there wouldn't, in my opinion, would not be sufficient unless you did. I hear what you're saying, Bill, and we have looked at phasing this project, phasing it in relation to the pipeline work versus the tank work. And that's a potential, but it's really a timing piece. So it's, it would be do the tank first, immediately followed by the pipe work or vice versa. So I don't know that that meets what you're describing, but we have looked at it in that way. But in my opinion, from what I understand of the project, it takes the entire project to accomplish what the project accomplishes.
I'll just hit it one more time. Do we have the financing secured? And is it going to be there if we spoke tonight to go ahead and proceed with it? You're talking about spending money on it beyond the $800,000 for the engineering study.
Let me speak to, I'll get to the last part of your question at the end of what I'm going to say. The project itself, the timing of the project, and I was touched on this earlier, but I don't know if I was perfectly clear. The property acquisition in particular, that piece of the project, could very well stretch us into bidding the project in about a year's time. The present schedule shows us bidding it this fall, but it's very dependent on that property acquisition.
Most impossible for that to happen.
Exactly. So we're really talking about a fall of 19 bid. But what I'm asking for tonight is direction and support to proceed with the project as designed, and of course, we'd come back to the board as we go through the various stages of the project, bidding, acceptance, et cetera. To the funding, I think perhaps, Jim, can you speak to that? You've been involved with that primarily. Could you come to the, or Kevin, either one?
Yeah. So we were approved for design funding. They're not going to approve a construction loan until you have design done.
Right.
So our design has not been finalized. There's still CEQA that's required, and that, and there's still a few little hoops we've got to jump through. But basically, once you get a design done within the process, the construction is just kind of a next-step portion of it. We have the funding available within our rates. They're ready to approve the funding package as soon as the design is done.
And if I'm not mistaken, Jim, before you answer, it also requires board support before final funding will be allocated. Is that not correct?
Every action requires a separate approval.
Yeah.
Well, Kevin may have missed recently, we've submitted 100% stamped design plans.
Oh, good.
Okay, that, 100%. CEQA is the next step, which is a process, which Standex has done a great job in dealing with that. We want to go into a 30-day public period. That should work out very well. The board takes action on CEQA findings. It's a prerequisite to SRF funding. The land acquisition is another prerequisite now for SRF funding. That's all that's left, okay? Like Kevin was saying, they've given us a funding agreement for planning and design. Moving into construction is pretty much just like, just meet the requirements, and I've done that. The last two is CEQA in Standex's hands and the land acquisition in Blackwater's hands and in their hands. We get funding. We get low-interest funding. There's, where's the road, where's the concern about not getting the funding? Your concern is, many agencies can't get through SRF. I've done it three times successfully. The last project, first project I did was 20 million. That project went on for years because of delays. We're in for a delay. Ed described the delay. SRF looks at the project and asks, and kind of asks our drinking water manager, that is, is it a valid project? And when SRF looks at Reese Crenshaw and says, "Yes," they continue to hold the place for our project, knowing that projects always have consequences delay, consequential delays.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. Hopefully, that answered your question, Phil.
Yeah, I'm satisfied with the answer. I didn't think I was going to persuade the board to change or anything, but I have these concerns, and I wanted to make them.
Valid concerns. Yes, sir.
For me, I just can't reiterate strongly enough the water quality issue. Where I came from, earth, earth tanks with liners, that's what we used for raw water.
Yes.
And so it's unacceptable. Should have been taken care of years ago, because all our water comes through there. So just on that alone, and all the rest is icing on the cake, to me, for that alone. It needs to be done. And we raised rates in January to start paying debt service for this project. So we do have the money.
And by the time we start drawing on it in a year...
It'll be there for debt service. So I say full steam ahead.
I really liked the redundancy in the firefighting flows that we have.
Me too. That's a huge concern. If that pipe were newer, maybe not quite so concerned, but...
Yep.
It's an old one. Bob, do you have any comments?
Open to the public, please.
Yes, thank you. I'm sure you are, probably all know Tom Kelly, the most influential person talking about fire prevention on the ridge and has for many, many years, engineering things such as the bridge upstream to be able to get a fire truck across it, so it'll hold 38,000 pounds. This is a guy who regularly speaks in public about everything that we can do, this fire prevention-related, to drive our insurance rates down. We still have a long ways to go, but he has got us one step in the last 10 years. That's not a whole lot of money. You've got to get down to about score five or six before it makes a big difference in money. But that's one of his objectives. So every time he finds out about something that we're doing, like this, he wants to see something right at the top of the list about fire prevention-related, all caps, all bold. He pushes that kind of stuff towards those people that he knows are part of the fire insurance rating group. And I think, you know, once we start this process, he should be part of the communication. We should bring him up to speed. We should let him know that he needs to go forward with the other contacts he has, because they need to know that we are progressing forward and making these kinds of improvements. Sure, it's a lot of money. It's also a lot of money when you lose a couple hundred homes. And, you know, the 2008 fires, that was roughly 12 to 15 million dollars worth of losses. First really, really big loss this town has ever had. The next biggest one was just a few weeks ago, when USDA raided the loss at Noble Orchard at $2.36 million because of the bears destroying the trees. So somewheres in between, we have a happy medium to be able to say, "We ain't going to have any more of these big losses." And fire prevention is a lot of the key to that. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Ward.
Thanks, Ward, for reminding us about Tom Kelly, because, yes, I have heard him and know that he is very active in that. We do need to pursue that. Help me remember, I'll talk to him too. He's a good friend.
Just a few things that run across my mind. I'd like to see us, if we're going to put in another pipeline, which I kind of like the idea, even though it does cost a lot of money, I'd like to see us go up Old Megalia, the old Skyway, put a tank out there beside the new cemetery, which is there by the community church, and then, of course, you'd have to pump it to there, but then, if the power went out, that'd all come downhill on gravity with a little pressure then. And you wouldn't have to deal with the new Skyway and the railroad tracks and all the rest of that stuff. So that's what I'd like to see us look into. If we're going to do it at all, I think that makes more sense than coming around New Skyway and dealing with the railroad. And, oh, by the way, there's, I personally know people that own property on the new part of Skyway that own both sides of the property, that I'm not sure that's decided yet whether Skyway could really legally go in there. They just basically bulldogged it, and they were the big money, so they went. Several people, like Art over here at the Trader Park, everybody knows the story of him. And there were several people that had prior rights that when the railroad abandoned it, it went back to them. So there's more to that than meets the eye. And this business about, about everything fire, you know, we finally got in a bridge at Whiskey Flats, Jordan Hill Road, for those of you who read the maps. But we got that in. And you know the result of that bridge? The result of that bridge is it's about a foot and a half narrower, and we can't get fire trucks across it. And why was that? Because they put in the nice new timbers, and when they put the rub rails in, instead of putting four-by-twelves in, they put bigger timbers so it'd be more secure, but they forgot to put them on the outside because they wanted them to be the rub rail, and that makes a turn, so now you can't get a truck across it, let alone the fact that the road's not passable. So let's not jump into things.
It hasn't been fixed.
Has it been pulled out? Oh, well, then, he got the boards, because he wanted to take the lumber home. But anyway, I'd like to see us think about Old Megalia. I think it'd be a lot more practical if we're going to spend the money. I like the idea, that 42-inch line, by the way, is, nobody knows how much that's down to now. You know, I wouldn't want to send an overweight person through there probably, because I'm not sure 42 is going to hold up like it used to. Judging from the six-inch line that goes down the easement beside my house, I personally saw that, and that's about a two-and-a-half-inch line that goes down that road now. So, and it was, it's rotten on the thing is a six-inch line, so that's a lot skinnier. So I think that we probably do need that line, but let's think about putting it up somewhere so, we've got a power problem here. Let's think about, let's think about gravity bringing that down off that hill. You might even be able to sell water then to Old Megalia. You know, there might be some goodness. Think about it.
Thanks, Ward.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right.
Just one more thing, too, is that we are still, financing-wise, we're still pursuing the grant on that Gallow Yes. grant for that pump station and A-zone pump station and generator and all that other stuff, so...
We just got some movement on that the last couple of days, and it was a, it was a sort of a procedural decline, but then a reassessment. Go ahead, Jim.
We had very positive response on our grant application for mitigation. Any project that goes to FEMA, of course, is an achievement, I'll just say. And what's happening is that there's, when money, the way I look at it, and I tried to have been very optimistic in the past, and apparently, this last, in the last two days, the optimism has been well-grounded, well, okay? When FEMA, what we're hearing is, when FEMA money becomes available again for mitigation, our project will get consideration and high, highly considered.
That's good to hear.
That's good.
That's the most optimistic I could say.
Yeah. So waiting for that money.
Okay, back to the board for questions, and then maybe an action. Any further questions? Chair would appreciate a motion.
I move to authorize the district manager to proceed with the design, bid process, and construction for the Reservoir B rehabilitation project.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right. And agenda here. All right, Dee, I guess maybe I could address this, seeing as I'm the one that got it going. Community invitation to meet and greet PID's new manager on Wednesday, September the 12th, 2018, 6:30 to 8:00 at the Paradise Senior Center. A number of years ago, the Senior Center Board took an action and said that whenever we have the opportunity to present something to the community that is of the interest to all the public, non, well, just of the interest to all the public in regards to whatever the need is, that the facility would be free to the use of that organization. the need is, that the facility would be free to the use of that organization. So I requested, and they said, sure. So we got a date lined up, and that happens to be Wednesday evening, the 12th. And what its purpose is, is we are hoping that the paper will cooperate with us and put it on the front page above the fold and everything, and so that the community can come and meet our new manager and ask questions and find out who he is and get us started off in the right direction in the community. So make sure all of you go home and stick it on your calendars and put it down and try to come. And does anybody have a reason that that shouldn't be a good idea?
Great idea.
Great idea.
I appreciate it, Dan, and just for clarification, Dan assured me that it's at the senior center, not because I'm legally.
That's a good place to meet.
But I'll fill it home.
Okay, well, that was just information, so please put it on your calendars soon, and please try to come. And we don't really have a format for it yet, haven't talked to anybody who worked out details, but it'll be pretty casual, I suspect, so.
We agree.
Yep.
Three, three.
Absolutely. Water, PID is the best vintage water that you can possibly obtain. Eleven Committee Reports. Bill and Mark.
Mark with the minutes, and I add, so you go over the minutes, and I have one.
He's amending the minutes, it's all good.
You always do a good job of that.
Okay, there's a couple of things, didn't get into the minutes, and one was confused. On number one, Greg discussed his ideas of location for the ADA picnic table, ADA accessible fish landing. Actually, the table would not be next to the existing handicap parking spot, the new, it would be next to the ADA fishing table.
Oh, okay.
It's in a different location.
Okay.
The closer to the bathrooms that are ADA. Okay, the rest of it's right, and the cost of the fishing table should be this, five thousand. I don't know, Jim's doing that, so I don't know what it's going to be. I think the board had already approved the expenditure, expenditure for the picnic table.
Bill, to give you an update, yeah, the tables purchased, and we actually met there on site this morning, Greg, myself, Ladrini, Jim, Passanese, and I guess that was it. And we looked at several sites in that general area and have some thoughts, and are going to put down some markers the week prior to the next Lake Committee meeting, and then we'll schedule the meeting there on site and discuss some more on.
Another meeting back up to the lake then.
But I think we have some.
Instead of having it here.
Yes, sir. I think we have some good solutions in mind.
That seems to be a better place for the committee to meet, actually. If we compare ideas, that we're very visual people, and we'd rather see things and talk about them down here on the state. Everything updated in the bulletin board, that's all accurate and to the point. Water, tree, plant, tour, all that, Jim did a very good job, just like assists in here. And the forty-two inch main, we just stood up at the top of it before it started down the hill. We didn't actually walk down to the thing. We felt afterwards that the trip took about, just the three of us being in pickup, took a half hour, forty-five minutes to go down the pipe and look, so thought we'd just leave that out of the committee meeting. They did talk about the half inch CFS flow in the Euclid for fishery and that. That's something that needs to be improved. We saw the clarifiers and filters and the new bypass diversion structure for its path of what it is. But on one side, it's up, there's pictures in this.
The new fence, that's good.
It's a very good job, they did a really good job welding it and getting the tang in and everything. Looks great, but we have to put another one on the other side of the creek. And then we talked about the trails from Megalia and the possible involvement of Beattie County RCD. And there's some money coming out of that, maybe. I get their information, bulletins, and it seems like there's been more money, funding coming out for other things for them. And then the blackberry, actually, recommending sprays for the thick blackberries. Jim and I, when we were driving back together after being here, we talked about it at length. And then we talked, went up and saw the wastewater retention ponds and how they discharge into Megalia reservoir. The thing we left off, and I'd forgotten about it too, till I remembered enough, the botanical garden and the park, it looks like they're going to get funding from Park and Rec District, they have some grant money coming, and Steve Rodwick, who talked very positively about getting that money, and if that comes, they will put in the road, finish putting in the road, and then start probably on the park first, and then the botanical garden. And the way that is, for Ed's information and everybody else, we signed a memorandum of understanding with the Park and Rec some years ago, when we first started working on that. It got shoved aside for, they didn't get any funding, and they tried to raise money for, but it's an open-ended memo of understanding. We have twenty acres that we've basically given to them, but it hasn't been given to them. It's a memo of understanding, and they're going to develop a park on the top part of it, and then the botanical garden goes down where the slope goes down. And they've even got a name for it, it's Lakeview Garden and Botanical Gardens. And there is designs available, they had developed, and when they went after the original grant money, and that was at a time when all the grant money disappeared in the state, and so it's been sitting there for, geez, almost five years, I think. So Steve was really, he's on that board, and he was really enthusiastic about it, so that was a good thing that came out. Both Mark and I forgot about it tonight in the minutes. So the committee is working very well, having the public members on it, they're all showing up, they're all contributing. And I'm looking to try to get Tom Kelly on. I talked to him, he's had some hip operations. So I saw him the other day, I didn't get a chance to talk to him. I'd like to get him on that committee, and I'll bring it to the board, but I'm going to get Tom to say he'll be, because all his maps and everything will be agreed up.
When he gets going on something, he's really dedicated and keeps pushing and pushing. I got a question, please, in regards to the ADA. Is this five thousand dollars, does that reflect labor for PID people plus materials? Or how does that work?
Well, there's been a lot of discussion around what that will, the final shape of that will look like. And after visiting the site today, I think we have some lower cost alternatives that would be far less than that. And yes, it would be primarily constructed in-house.
The reason I ask is because we've got several real good people on the board here in Concrete RS. I mean, I pour millions of yards of concrete, I do it all the time. I would love to help with that, if I could help to have the help.
Thank you, we'll take you up on that.
Mark and Bill and Bob, we would be able to really totally do the concrete work ourselves.
Super, yeah, we have some qualified staff as well that can help, but yeah, super, thank you, in advance.
So when it comes to that, please, I would be just tickled to help with it, to help it cross down.
We need to decide exactly what we're doing, then we'll ask.
Yeah, we won't start setting forms yet until you decide where they go.
Yeah, that would be good.
That's a good idea. Thank you. Anything else, Mark?
I know, that's it. Thank you, thank you.
Director's comments. Bill, how about you start?
Well, I already blew so much smarter. I am very much appreciative of our new manager. He listens to, he doesn't have to agree, but he does listen, and he does give me a chance to go find out things that I couldn't do before, and to explore things within the district, like the pipeline and seeing all the brush and stuff that's come out. I didn't know that before. Had some information, but I'd never seen it. I thought the pipe was sticking on pillows, it was in brown. So that was very good, and I know what's going on. That kind of openness and working with a cranky sometimes board member is very much appreciated. And it's a complete do-over for me, because I don't have to. And he's even got me to agree to, when I go out and inspect things, that I will give him notice.
Please, please, sir.
Raise the board.
We're moving in the right direction.
Did you get that in the minutes, Georgina?
Yeah.
Anything, Bob?
I attended the tour last week and the week before as a private citizen, and I mainly did it because I didn't even know where the place was, so I wanted to just get the basic idea of how all this works. But what impressed me was the depth of knowledge that everybody had. And everybody that stood around, I mean, with ten of us all together, everybody, somebody would start talking about something, and somebody else would chime in. Everybody seemed to know everybody else's job and everybody's, what goes on there. There's just a lot of, obviously a lot of cross knowledge that, like you said, if somebody wasn't here, the place is still going to go on, because I just couldn't believe how knowledgeable everybody was, and it was very informative for me. I heard terms I never heard before, so trying to pick up on it. But I want to thank you, all you guys, it was a great tour.
Yeah?
I just wanted to say, I had Georgiana pass out a copy of, this was a slideshow presentation from a webinar that I watched concerning the new conservation laws. And so it's also been put on our website, some information about the new conservation laws. It was very informative, so I had to pass that out for each director and for Kevin and Ed.
Thank you. Mark, any comments?
Yeah, just want to thank the public again for being here, Ward, Dan, Larry, Lauren, appreciate it, appreciate you being here. Also want to give some credit to Dan Wentland for the really great paint job on the red barn. Him and his wife Sherry.
Couldn't have done it without.
Yeah, him and his wife Sherry spent their Fourth of July out there in that heat, spray painting the facility over there. It looks great, so, thank you.
I found the red barn.
That's next.
But Mark was a very big assistance, and we really appreciate that, so. Everybody's doing good, and we appreciate that very much. Thanks for keeping PID positive. And we will now go to closed session, conference with labor negotiators, employee organizations and PID representatives, so.